Good evening, everyone. We might make a start and welcome to everyone here tonight in our gallery. I would like to begin with that we, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin tonight's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, our privacy notice, please note this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information, to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Apologies, we have a recommendation, there would someone please like to move the recommendation on page one in regard to Bruce Jevanetti not being here tonight, councillor Ozzavari?
I'd like to move the recommendation, madam mayor, that the apology of councillor Jevanetti be noted and a leave of absence be granted.
Thank you very much, shall I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the...
I hope he's enjoying his holiday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Okay, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting, is any item of those minutes opposed? Would someone please like to move the recommendation, also on page one, that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting be moved, councillor Summer?
On page one, please, that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held 19th of June 2018 as circulated be confirmed.
Very much, we have a second, councillor Adam?
I'll see the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor, would you like to speak to that? We'll all go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. We now go to public question time, I'd also like to welcome Mr Teysel here tonight, acting CEO, well, Mr Harriet Isaway.
Okay, thanks, madam mayor. We have two questions from Susan Daniel, is Susan in the gallery? Welcome. The first question is, who requested the reclassification of Ford Road to allow B double trucks? The answer to that, Ford Road has been included on the National Heavy Vehicle Register as a B double route since June 2015. Prior to that, B doubles were permitted to use Ford Road under individual permits. Permission to use Ford Road as a B double route was requested by individual transport operators and the permits were issued in their names along with the vehicle registration details. Those permits were authorised and issued by traffic management staff. Since the introduction of the heavy, of national heavy vehicle law and register, B double routes are added to the register by the National Heavy Vehicle Regulator only after the consent of the road manager. And the second question, who was the council representative that recommended slash approved slash authorised the reclassification, including name and position held? For council roads, the chief executive officer and the director of infrastructure have delegated authority to provide that authorisation. Thanks, madam mayor.
Sorry, of my apology, I would also like to ask any councillors if there is any declarations of conflict of interest tonight? No, thank you very much. We'll now go over to page two, item 7.1, we have a petition for a playground in Connolly Park Estate, would a council please like to move the recommendation?
Yes, madam mayor, I'll move that the petition be received and note that we'll be dealt with at some future point.
Thank you very much, shall I have a second please? Councillor Patterson, thank you very much, councillor Hayesman would you like to speak to that? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to that? Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak for the motion? Any closing comments, councillor Hayesman? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 8.1, appointment of members to the aerodrome advisory committee on page three, the recommendation is also on page three, do I have a councillor who'd like to move that recommendation, please? Councillor Patterson?
I'll move that, madam mayor.
Much, do I have a second, councillor Ozzavari? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, I'd like to welcome as a council responsible, who sits on that committee, I'd like to welcome Michael Mauer, Karen Coonley, and Tommy Garrett on that committee. It's a, it's a good little committee, it's, they're very active and, and they will have their say, whatever they want to say about anything, they'll certainly have an input, which is good. So I'm looking forward to working with them down the path and, and keep the aerodrome running as well as we possibly can.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, now go to item 8.2, which is on page seven, the recommendation is on page eight, the item is draft, deacon reserve, future directions plan, approval for public exhibition and comment. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion, please?
Yes, madam mayor, I'll move the recommendation, it's printed on page eight of the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Hayesman, do I have a second please? Councillor Ozzavari, councillor Hayesman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor, look, it's been an extensive process over a long period of time of consultation with both the, the management committee and the user groups there, and we've been, we had engaged a consultant and our staff have been particularly active over this period. No doubt that the future directions plan, it's been a long time coming and people have been expecting some of the contents that'll be in there. The opportunity is now available for the public to provide a very formal feedback on it, commencing on the 18th of July, concluding on the 15th of August, and it'll no doubt come back potentially at the September ordinary meeting of council for a final decision to be made. No doubt as well, there'll be components in the master plan that will have, you know, strong support, and there's others that people will be less supportive of, and that's part of the, part of the process.
Thank you very much, councillor Hayesman. Councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.1, the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Advisory Committee membership appointments on page 12, the recommendation is also on page 12. Do I have a councillor who would like to move that motion, please? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the recommendation on page 12, that the council endorse the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Advisory Committee membership applications listed below for a two-year term, effective immediately and concluding on 17 July 2020. Suzanne Wallace, Fatmata Manu, Zubaida Mohammed. And item number two, to thank Jan Philip for her significant contribution to the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah, do I have a second please?
Second to motion, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to motion?
I would like to say that it's so pleasing to see that, that the membership drive was undertaken and it was to fill three positions, and for those three positions, there were 12 applications, so it is definitely a very positive sign. It shows the interest that our community members, and women in particular, are showing in this advisory committee. I would be happy to endorse the three nominations, and the three nominations reflect the diversity of membership, and one of them is a returning mem, has been on the committee and she's taken a break and now coming back, so it's, we would like to, I would like to welcome all three of them. And also would like, this, would like to thank Jan Philip, who had been with the committee for a very long time, and Jan has contributed significantly and she has, she's always been a very active and passionate member of the committee, so a big thanks to Jan Philip, and I wish her all the best, and I hope that she would still be in touch with the committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I would like to, madam mayor, I think it's, it's great that we had 12 nominations for the two positions, I think that's really is a sign that the committee has come of age well and truly, not that it hadn't before, but it has really progressed and moved on. I remember the early years when it first started, you know, there was sort of an urgency to get enough numbers to make it operate correctly, and to see that, you know, you're getting 12 people nominated for two positions for anything is really, really healthy and I encourage it, and it does do a great job and gives a lot of women a fresh start getting out in the field again after coming from different backgrounds and childbirth, et cetera, so, yeah, no, it really, it's terrific.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Sorry, we have an interruption? Okay, sure. We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.2, section 86 committees' memberships on page 15, the recommendation is on page 15 and 16, would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Summer?
Page 15 and 16, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Ozzavari, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure, this is in regards to a few of our committees of management in the smaller towns, and appointing some new people and saying goodbye to some old people. We've got strong community engagement in the small towns, which this is evidence of. Volunteers are really important to us because it does take some of the pressure off of our organisation. They do a terrific job, so I'd want to congratulate all the new people who are coming on board and thank all the people on their way out for their contribution.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.3, Kaila West Recreation Reserve, dissolution of section 86 committee of management on page 21, and the recommendation is also on page 21, would a councillor please like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
21, as a motion, thank you.
Very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Patterson, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
This is about the Kaila West Recreation Reserve dissolution. This decision didn't actually came, come from us, it came from the committee itself. They passed a motion back in March, I think, to dissolve the committee. They've done a really good job, they've been responsible for the managing and operating of the committee, but due to declining use and it's just sort of become unsustainable, a few of the clubs are not, no longer in existence. So our parks, sport and rec department will absorb the operational part without necessarily having to increase staff, which is great, and remaining funds should be going towards the improvement, towards improving the reserve, and I believe we're in the process of doing that now.
Yeah, councillors, I just wanted to clarify a matter in the, in the report, and councillor Summer just mentioned it, on page 22, the second last paragraph in there is not, doesn't reflect exactly what's going to happen, in that the, any remaining funds will be returned to council, the, the section 86 committee that was down there won't have any power to spend any money, so that will be managed by council and spent on some minor improvements and building maintenance works down there. The minutes, the report attached to the minutes of this meeting will reflect, will not have that paragraph in the report, just wanted to clarify that with councillors.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would, it was a missed million probably all of us not to thank in the previous motion, those people who are stepping down off their management committees, and we talk long and hard about our volunteer community members, and this is a perfect example, we've literally run out of them in that, in that region, and for that reason, that community hall will now fall under council's spell, for lack of a better word. We are so desperate for volunteers in our community and our society in general these days, it's getting harder and harder for people to have the time, it's getting harder and harder for them to have the inclination to be involved, to have their say on the local communities, and this is just a sign of what probably is to come, and I hope it isn't, I hope we can still keep, and the community can still keep developing people and willing to step up, put their hand up and do their bit for the local community. And some of those names off there, like Frank Jeller at Darren Gole, he's been a few years, done a great job, you know, he's really community-based, and they're the sort of people we can't afford to be really losing, but, you know, he's done his job, he's prepared to move on, and so he should, he's done a terrific job. But, you know, I, I'd hate, and this is the first one I can recall since I've been in council, but I'd hate to continue on and we continue to lose more councils, and more community members.
Volunteers, thank you very much for that, councillor Patterson. Does any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.4, Greater Shepparton Seniors Festival, October 2018, on page 26, the recommendation is on page 26 and 27, would a councillor please like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
On pages 26 and 27.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Ozzavari, got in first over there, thank you for that. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
In regards to the seniors festival, which is happening in October, there's been a slight change, so instead of seniors week, it's rebranded as seniors festival, it's been going on a really long time, since 1982. The theme this year is get social. We know that social isolation is a risk for the older population, so this is a way that we can try and encourage them to remain active and engage with the community. We have got an aging population, in here it says that we're going to have 23.4% over the age of 60 by, which we already have, and up in 2038, it's likely we'll have over 30% over the age of 60, so these sorts of initiatives are important, and it's pleasing because we have been able to offer the full amount requested for all of these events.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think councillor Summer's covered it beautifully.
Covered it very well, thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, now go to item 10.1, the media policy, 07 dot P O L one, the recommendation is on page 30, as is the item, so page 30, recommendation page 30. Would I have a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Ozzavari?
I'd like to move the recommendation, madam mayor, on page 30, is the motion, council adopt the revised media policy.
Thank you very much, shall I have a second please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Ozzavari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor, it's self-explanatory.
Much, councillor Summer?
It's just an attempt to put some parameters in place, just to prevent confusion in the community, we know that the mayor's the official spokesperson, but councillors are entitled to express our views so long as it's communicated that it's our personal view and not the position of council as a whole.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I was surprised councillor Summer was so quick on that, I thought it might have been an hour or so. But, yeah, I think, I think all councillors would agree, you know, the policy is correct, the concern, when it always comes up, is sometimes councils can be stifled, and that is not the case. As councillor Summer said, you know, we're entitled to have our say to anyone we want to say to, long as we make sure that these people know it's our opinion and not council's opinion, that's important.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, now go to item 10.2, contracts awarded under delegation, the recommendation is on page 33, as is the item, would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Hayesman?
I'll move the recommendation, printed on page 33.
Thank you very much, councillor Hayesman, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Hayesman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor, it's self-explanatory.
Councillor Sutton? Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I would like to just point out, there's a couple of very important ones in here that are out for tender at present, and that is Sam, which is closed, and they also, the sale yards, and I can't help thinking of former councillor, councillor Ryan, who would always go, culture, culture, agriculture's only two that matter and they're together there, so, they will be very big in the next few months when we visit them, and it's an exciting time.
Thank you for that, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 11.1, Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee revised terms of reference and annual report on page 36, the recommendation is also on page 36, would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
I'll move that.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah? Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
It's just amended terms of reference to the heritage advisory committee. The committee hasn't been around all that long, since 2012 it was established, and it was established because there's an awareness of how much heritage we've lost around Shepparton and surrounds, and it's an attempt to try and educate the public on why it's important and what we have, and pleasingly, there's these surprising heritage hotpot, hotspots that keep popping up everywhere whenever we do these studies, and the people in the committee are really, really, really engaged, so they're always on the lookout and trying to preserve pretty much everything. So there's six community representatives, as far as I can see there, instead of four, I think, and there's also a bullet point that council will host a biennial Bruce Wilson Memorial Heritage Lecture, which I think is very appropriate. The late Bruce Wilson was integral in driving a lot of these initiatives, so it'll be just great to see him honoured in that way. So other than that, I'm pretty happy with the changes and look, look forward to seeing some heritage.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think councillor Fundsummer has captured it very well, so it's all good, and I endorse that recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 11.2, on page 44, use and develop of 104 Hogan Street Tatura for a car wash, self-storage facility and food premise. Recommendations are on pages, which is quite extensive, page 41, 42, 43, 44, 45 and 46. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson, what would you like to move?
Just what you said, motion through page 41 to 46, thank you.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please?
I'll second the motion, madam.
Councillor Adam? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, we did have a few objectives with this, and a few come presented their concerns with us. Basically, the proponents of this development have made a lot of changes already to incorporate the concerns that these people had. It is close to the middle of Tatura, I'll grant that, it has been vacant for about 30 years, this block of land, it was originally a flower business, and then that closed and it's been empty sitting there for all that time. It's on a roundabout, which really is, to me, is a good spot for it, easy access. It is really governed by the flood overlay, the front of the, the building or the block is, you cannot put a dwelling on one side, but you can on the other side, so the proposed development is allowed for that, they've put a shop on one side which fits the main street part, and they haven't wasted the rest of it by putting, they've put some car washes in there and some storeys, so there's lots of amendments in there, and I've been over backwards to please as many people as I can, they haven't pleased everyone, but I think, I'll have to the fact, there's a car wash right bang smack in the middle of Marutna, this one isn't right in the middle of town, it's sort of on the edge of the CBD, and I think it'll be good for the town, take up another spot and get more foot traffic and support the other businesses in the town, so I totally support it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly and briefly, councillors don't often get to see all the detail of many of these planning issues, this has obviously been brought to us because there was more than five objectives, but having seen all the detail, there's a lot of conditions being placed on this, and they meet my satisfaction, so, yeah, I'm happy to support it completely.
Okay, thank you so much, councillor Adam. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. And so councillors, we now go to page 64, we'll go to item 12, tabled motions, we have nil received. Item 13, reports from council delegates to other bodies, we have nil received. Reports from special committees and advisory committees, we have nil received. Item 15, notice of motion, amendment or rescission, we do have a notice of motion, item 15.1, I ask councillor Sutton to move that motion?
I'd like to move the motion as printed on page 64.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
Can you just say what the item is, that's fine, yep, it's fine.
To planning application 28 and to, between 2018, 118, on the basis of the information before council, have considered all relevant matters as required by the Planning and Environment Act 1987, that the council resolves to, one, issue a notice of refusal on the following grounds, the land is not suitably located for residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre, being in close proximity to two primary schools and a quiet older residential area. The residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre will result in unacceptable social impacts with numerous residents living on site together with car movements and extended hours of operation. The residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre will produce undesirable social consequences to the amenity and the residents of the neighbourhood.
Thank you, councillor Sutton, do I have a second please? Councillor Ozzavari? Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
We're here once again with this same thing, so I'll just read out similar to what I've, what I've said before, but this is still a very emotional issue, and we must consider this issue on its planning merits, and we also must consider the location and amenity of the area. The current location of the drug and rehabilitation facility, in my opinion, is not suitable for various reasons. Pertinent points include situated in an educational precinct with St George's Road Primary School and Children's Centre just a block away, and St Mel's Primary School and Kindergarten to the east on St Andrews Road, and the noise aspect with this many people living in one location in a quiet residential neighbourhood. Does this propose a, pose a risk? Maybe, maybe not, but it's difficult to ascertain. The rehabilitation centre will have up to 23 residents on site, people make a noise. They are allowed to, and I'm not saying they can't, but with cars coming and going and this number of people, there's going to be, to be noise, and I believe that this is a social impact that could be extreme for those living right next door and in the immediate neighbourhood. Numerous residents have submitted objections to this application, noting that they don't feel safe, and who are we to say they are wrong? We as a council have to listen to all our ratepayers and make a decision in good faith and that we are personally able to live with. This will no doubt offend and alienate some people. I've considered this application in relation to the area where it is situated and the amenity of their local residents. I've heard of the residents that are living very close to this facility are suffering from health issues due to the location of the drug and alcohol rehab facility, and have taken this on board with my decision. We need to be aware of the social impacts that this facility is having on many of the residents and their enjoyment of the neighbourhood in which they have been living for many years. I note that we do need a facility such as the cottage, but would rather see a high-quality drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility established on a non-residential site that is government-regulated and has licensed professional staff on-site 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor Ozzavari?
Thank you, madam mayor, look, I previously, as all us, all of my colleagues here have spoken about this, and I don't propose to go back over material that I've previously put as part of my position in relation to it. There is a right way and a wrong way, this, my position is purely the same in terms of planning, permits and things of that nature, and I don't propose to take the matter any further with this stage.
Thank you very much, councillor Ozzavari. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
I'm extremely disappointed by this motion, it goes absolutely nowhere towards addressing the problem of substance abuse, and it also sends a message that recovering addicts should be hidden away. It validates unfounded fears and it reinforces-
It validates unfounded fears, and it reinforces a deeply held negative stigma about addiction. It even goes some way towards explaining why so many people have not been successful in seeking help for their addictions. My position hasn't changed since the last vote, no new information has been presented. Objectors failed to convince me before, so naturally, my opinion still stands. As mentioned at the last meeting, it is clear that many of these objectors have allowed this matter to impact on their lives, and they're genuinely distressed, but it seems to me that largely caused by innuendo and their own volition, to be honest. And if we're also being honest, the crux of the argument is an assumption that recovering addicts are dangerous. Politicians and the media spread fear about addiction just to keep their jobs. They make it seem like it's a personal problem that only affects bad people. This way of thinking has cultivated an underclass that only entrenches the problem. Addiction is not a personal flaw, it's a sociological symptom of a broader community. Vilifying addicts goes no way towards rehabilitation and exacerbates crime caused by those continuing to try and sustain their addiction. These problems are passed down through generations in a cycle that's very hard to break, costing a community millions in financial, social, and environmental impact. Despite perception, people at the cottage are low-risk, and as many others have said, I'd rather have a cottage next to me than an active substance abuser at risk of making poor life choices, way more at risk. I'm even told that the amenity of the area has greatly improved since the cottage moved in, and we ourselves witnessed smooth operational processes and manicured gardens during our personal tour. There's been talk that the model isn't appropriate or the location isn't appropriate, but entertaining these ideas are a quandary. Even if we started again, ticked every box, the reality is we'd still be in this position. The 'not in my backyard' crew will always find another excuse to object. There's no right one-size-fits-all, and there will never be a location without detractors. We need a great many of these facilities, all different types of models that should have been established 20 years ago, but have been sidelined by ignorant public pressure, political neglect, and the too-hard basket. We must consent to the cottage because finally someone is actually doing something about the problem. It's not a detox facility, it's a stepping stone back to everyday life, and what better place to re-establish life in the community than in a facility placed in the community, by the community, for the community?
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
I'll speak against the motion, and the key word is the motion. I'm not here to discuss how well it's run, the price of oil in Sri Lanka or anywhere else, we're here to discuss that motion, right? The first part of the motion says the land is not suitably located for residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre because it's close proximity to two primary schools and a quite older residential area. There's one letter we've received from the first closest school, St Mel's, supporting it 100%, that addresses that problem. The second one is a letter from the kindergarten across the road, totally supporting it, totally supporting it. They didn't know it was there for six months, totally support it. Go down the page, it's schools in an older residential area, so if we put it in a newer residential area, does that fix that problem? No, that's not the problem. So you can chuck away point one. The second one's a drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre will result in unacceptable social impacts and numerous residents living on the site close together. We have all received a letter from the closest neighbour that lives aside, totally supports it. He has trouble with noise, not coming from here, coming from the other residents around, having wild parties and screeching cars. Again, that is chucked out, there is no base of support for that. The other one is the residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre will produce undesirable social consequences to the normal and the residents of the neighbourhood with people playing up. There is an interview with Troy Hencock, Troy Harding, the local inspector. If there is a problem with bad actions down there, we'd better tell the police because they don't know about it. There has been no increase in alkyne, sorry, in any antisocial activity at all, and that's coming from the head of police. So if that's what we're going on, there is not one scareic of support for that motion, and that is the motion we are dealing with. We're not acting on it. Anything else, we're acting on that. We're not talking about how well it's run or who makes money out of it, who puts money in it. That is what we're dealing with tonight, and that doesn't stand up in a body, the pub test or anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to just say that I do not support this notice of motion. Councillor Dennis Patterson has captured every point very well in a very objective manner, look at the refusal grounds, and has given evidence that these grounds are not based on facts, they are mere assumptions, and assumptions one can make about anyone at any time, at anywhere. So this is a decision that needs an objective understanding. Yes, emotions are important, but in this case, you have to, you know, look at the, based on the planning decisions, based on the criteria, based on the conditions, and also based on this important crisis, I would say, that our Shepparton, or Greater Shepparton region is facing. Who is going to take that first step and say, 'Yes, in my backyard'? So I think this is the time, the time has reached, that we all think as a community rather than as individuals, and not-in-my-backyard syndrome has to be kicked out. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor, would you speak against the motion? Councillor Hayesman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can take a slightly different tack and reflect on how we arrived at this position and where we're potentially going to. A month ago, we had a very detailed 25-page report from our professional planning officers, prepared with the assistance of a planning lawyer, and council voted to reject that planning report, which effectively then, we provided all of that 25 pages, then becomes the applicant's Exhibit A at VCAT. They will use all of that material in terms of pursuing this point. Going back reading through the professional officer's report, they did consider each of these issues that are in the notice of motion, and provided grounds, reasons why they didn't support those in terms of the recommendation they finally made to the council. Councillor Patterson's right, he's been through all of that in some detail and dissected them and tried to provide some rationalities behind what was actually recommended by our officers, but also like to go a little bit further and indicate that there's some aspects of this that are clearly not defined. And at some point, if this motion is successful, and it ultimately will end up at VCAT, there's no doubt about that, whether it's approved or whether the actual application itself had been approved, VCAT was the obvious where it was heading to. In relation to the council report that we as a group rejected, that would have formed the basis of a brief for a consultant to have defended our position at VCAT. What we've got here is about a dozen lines. So if this motion is successful, I'd be very curious to know how are we going to brief a consultant to defend our position at VCAT? What actually will that consultant take to the panel and argue on our behalf? For example, what are unacceptable social impacts? If that gets accepted, adopted here tonight, what's being said on our behalf at VCAT to try and support that? What examples would be provided? Normally, we'd have a very extensive officer's report, which would define what those outcomes actually were, so we had something to base a decision on. Very similarly, with undesirable social consequences, again, it's poorly, it's not defined at all. So this is really speculative in terms of the grounds of why we're refusing it. Normally, as I said, you'd have a very comprehensive report, you'd have the officer's recommendation backed up by facts, figures, and evidence. This is being based on quasi-planning grounds. We saw at the last meeting, the grounds for refusal, or what was put forward, were issues around them operating without a planning permit? Well, the truth is, council issues retrospective planning permits on a fairly regular basis. I'd like an extension, thank you.
Extension, everyone in favour of an extension? For Councillor Hayesman?
Issues in relation to the nature of the operation, they're clearly not planning issues. And again, we see here in point two, concerns about car movements. Well, the original application and the officer's recommendation highlighted the fact that they needed to provide 10 car parking spaces on site, they're in fact providing 13. The hours of operation is being opposed here. Extended hours of operation, again, what does that mean? If, as all the parties agree, that this is primarily a residential facility, what on earth are hours of operation? Is that the period of time people are allowed to sleep? What are we actually talking about? And so I'm concerned, and I will oppose it, and on a cynical basis, you could nearly vote for this to ensure it was the council position as a true supporter of the cottage, because this is going to be very, very difficult for councils to defend anywhere, let alone at VCAT.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Hayesman. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any closing comments? Councillor Sutton?
Got a few. I just would like to point out that what we are actually voting for is a drug and alcohol rehabilitation centre. It's not for a halfway house or something like that, it's actually says it's a drug and rehabilitation centre. And unacceptable social impacts have been provided by residents living in that vicinity who are suffering from health issues, and it's due to the actual location of this facility. Now, we need to take that on board as well, because they are important in this argument, we can't just dismiss them altogether. So that's why I put this motion up, and that's why I'm voting for it, because we have to listen to these people, we can't just listen to one and not to another. So I think that there is unacceptable social impacts, and they have been, we have been provided with that from some of these residents. Thank you.
Okay, that's Councillor Sutton's opinion, thank you for that. Have you finished, Councillor Sutton? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour. So against... Okay, councillors, we have a tie, so I will be using my casting vote in favour of the recommendation, so motion is carried. We have a second notice of motion, item 15.2. I ask Councillor Adam to move the motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The motion I'll be moving is quite lengthy, but in brief, in relation to planning application 2018-118, on the basis of the information before council, and having considered all relevant matters as required by the Planning and Environment Act 1987, should the council have resolved to issue notice of refusal, which has just happened, or if the application is made with VCAT for failure to grant a permit, the council resolves to, and there's quite a few points there, should I read them out?
A tentative recommendation there, Councillor Adam. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the recommendation?
Just briefly, this is a motion to ensure that, as Councillor Hayesman indicated earlier, this will go to VCAT one way or the other, and I think it will be there. This is to, I suppose, assist VCAT if they should decide that they will order this council to grant a permit, we shall provide all the conditions that were pretty much in the original application that was refused. It's really, it ensures that, well, it doesn't ensure anything, to be quite honest, because VCAT could ignore this, but it will go to them, they'll have these conditions to apply to any direction to us to issue a permit, otherwise we may have to have another meeting and go through these issues, or maybe not. So it's a bit of a reserved motion, hopefully it won't, they won't be needed, but who knows what will happen at VCAT.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll speak to the motion, in that, as Councillor Adam pointed out, it is precisely the same conditions that were attached to the officer's recommendation to... That's all right, you can replay it again. We'll listen a second time. It's precisely the same conditions that the officers recommended in their report and recommendation to approve. So the actual approval was rejected, but now we're saying, if by some chance VCAT indicates they may want to approve it, we'll now adopt those very same conditions. I would have thought if the level of opposition to this facility was as strong as alleged, there would be some variation, and some of these conditions would have been made even stronger. But in fact, no, we'll just go with the old status quo, and we'll handball it straight to VCAT, and if they make the decision, don't blame us, because, you know, it wasn't our decision.
Thank you, Councillor Hayesman. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour.
I can have some closing comments, can I?
We didn't have anyone speaking.
Could you speak against the motion, Councillor?
No, that was to the motion.
To the motion, sorry.
I was just pointing out the irony of the situation.
I thought you were speaking against the motion.
No, it's actually to the motion.
It sounded like to me so. Violently in support.
We'll now go to the vote, please, all those in favour, against, motion carried, We'll go to item 16 on page 66, documents for signing and sealing, nil received. We'll go to item 17.1 on page 67, the recommendation is on page 68. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor O'Sullivan?
I'd like to move the motion, Madam Mayor, on the bottom of page 68. The summary of councillors' community interaction briefing programme be received.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
All there, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? To the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Oh, sorry, to the motion.
No, no, I'm about to vote.
Are you stretching? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, now go to item 18.1, assemblies of councillors on page 69, the recommendation is actually on page 80. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Adam?
The recommendation, assemblies of councillors, as a motion, yep.
Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Sullivan? Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, obviously, it's pretty plain and simple, it just shows all the different events, not events, but assemblies of councillors, who was there, who wasn't there, and who left during a briefing. That wouldn't have been me, of course, at any time.
It wouldn't have been me.
No, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor.
Yes, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Councillor O'Sullivan, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I can't compete with that, you're right.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Go to item 19, urgent and other business not included in the agenda, nil received. Item 20, confidential management reports, nil received. We'll now go to item 20.1, designation of confidentiality of information, and the meeting will now be closed. If I could please have a councillor move the motion?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Adam?
Close the meeting.
To close the meeting. A second, please, Councillor O'Sullivan? We now ask the members of the gallery, please, to leave the meeting.